I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 3rd. We will also be acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would please sit, we will have the road call. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Fonse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And we also have our city attorney Scott Campbell present and our city treasurers in the audience this evening. All right. Thank you, Willie and Scott. Do we have any announcements or written communications? I have none. Okay. Department head reports.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got one item to report. Our active transportation plan that we're working on, we're rolling out two demonstration projects this next week. So the intent of these demonstrations is to temporarily set up mock versions of improvements in several different locations and gather input. The duration of any one location is a maximum of six hours and may be shorter. So we'll be all over, all over the community doing these things. So the first project type is a parklet. You've seen parklets, if you've witnessed down, been in downtown Long Beach where they have dining, they can be used commercially, or they can be used for hangout spots. And so we'll roll a few of those out and we'll receive some input. The second one is artistic crosswalks, and you've also seen these artistic crosswalks in downtown Long Beach, if you've been on Pine Avenue. And these are typically used at mid-block crossings. And so instead of a ladder-type crosswalk, which is high vis, you know, visibility, they're used for high visibility, but also to add additional artistic aesthetics to a community. The potential locations for the parklets right now are in the parking stalls at the roadway edge, so we, we take the parking away for the time that we're doing it.
Where is that, I'm sorry? Where did you say?
At, at the parking stalls at the roadway edge. And here's some locations that we're considering. The lobster trap frontage in that area there where we have some parking. The Catalina Island Inn frontage, you know, back as we advance up from the old Vons. The LA County Library frontage on Sumner there, so there would be a location for a hangout spot. The artistic crossings, the crosswalks, potentially at Metropole at the mid-block crosswalk there. So it would, if we did one, it would take the place of the ladder crosswalk. Casino Way restroom crossing and in that where people go from Casino Way over to the restroom. And a crossing potentially at Pebbley Beach Road at Lover's Cove. And so try them there, roll them out for a few hours, gather input, and then that would be added to the plan, you know, of what people think of those things, good, bad, indifferent. So that, you know, at the point when we get the plan together, then we can present it to the community and council and then adopt that plan. And that would be something that would be utilized in our toolbox. So that's why we look at them as a demo. So if somebody doesn't like, or they don't work for us, we cannot, you know, we can just say, we're not going to consider this as some, a tool. Okay? Any questions?
No, that's, that'll, that'll be fun. And when are we doing this?
This next week. We're supposed to get what is called the kit of parts. What the consultant that's helping us with this, they have this kit that has all these different demo parts in it. And they're supposed to arrive here tomorrow, but that's why I'm just saying, we wanted to roll it out on a weekend. But since we're busy anyway, it really doesn't matter if we roll it out on a weekend or any day of the week. So once we get that kit here, you know, it could be this weekend, early this weekend, but it could roll out at separate locations during the week. And that also depends on staffing because we have to have somebody there to receive the input during the time. Okay?
Right. Great.
Okay.
Any questions? Mr. Greenlaw?
If you could just give us a heads up, that would be awesome. I'd like to definitely.
Yes. As we get prepped, at least the day before, hey, we're going to roll one of these out.
Perfect.
And we'd be manning it, so I'd be right there or some other staff. Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Orin Karstarfen, Harbor Master. Okay, so we continue to see strong numbers of visitors. Last week, the inner harbor remained full all week long until, until patrol sold out Descanso on Friday night and all of Hamilton Cove on Saturday evening. Here are the numbers. The arriving boats Friday through Sunday, patrol moored 316 boats for a total of 1,196 nights. The beautiful mornings gave way to breezy afternoons, creating challenges for many of our visitors who were assisted by the Harbor Patrol onto the mornings. Over the weekend, the Harbor Patrol did one accident report, responded to two medical incidents, and had 10 enforcements and 38 public assists. Last week, we were honored to attend, on July 28th, the Mayor, Mayor Marshall, Mayor Pro Tem Cindy Cassidy, Patrol Officer Kurt Cameron, and I attended the 2021 Medal of Valor Awards presentation at King Harbor Yacht Club in Redondo Beach. The Medal of Valor Awards are the kickoff to the International Surf Festival and are presented by the cities of Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Torrance, and Los Angeles County Fire Department and Department of Beaches and Harbors. Kurt and I were very proud to accept the Medal of Valor Award on behalf of the city of Avalon, Avalon Harbor Patrol, and William Flickinger, who was, the award was intended for. His heroic actions last September, when a coworker fellow patrolman had a medical emergency while on duty. William was unable to attend due to a scheduling conflict. The Medal of Valor presentation was notably significant for this, because this was the first time that the Medal of Valor Medal has been awarded to an outside agency and represents just how well Los Angeles County and the city of Avalon EMS agencies all work together for public safety on Catalina Island. That's all I have.
Any questions of our Harbor Master? No, thank you. Nice report. And I understand that that, the video that was done at that presentation was put on Facebook, and I think a lot of other people have seen it. I don't know how it got on there, but it's floating around there somewhere if anybody wanted to watch it. Did you want to comment to that, Orin?
I wasn't aware, but I, I knew that the link could be transferred to Facebook. And I, I think if you, if you watch the video, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's an awesome video. Yeah.
You checked with Matt. Maybe we could see if we could put it up towards the end of the meeting, at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Today is National Night Out. It's the 38th annual event where law enforcement comes and interacts with the community. So for those of you who are still around after the meeting, we'll be over on Front Street with all of our vehicles, our equipment, our crime prevention information, and there to interact with the members of the community who wish to come out. This is a nationwide event, and we and the Sheriff's Department take great pride in that. And so that's why we're out on Front Street. A few people were asking me already. I'm sweating because I've been out there. But we've had a great interaction with the tourists and locals as well so far this evening. But in terms of our activity, alcohol still becomes one of our major issues. And I did a write-up in our Islander paper this last week, speaking specifically to our restaurants, our servers, and trying to inform them of repercussions and the possibility of licenses being revoked by ABC if there's issues as well, liability and issues that we fall into as it relates to alcohol-related incidents. But crime as a whole is, is down, and we're taking great pride in that. Even though our visitation and tourism is up, we are keeping a handle on things, and there's no other major issues or things to report.
Great. Does anybody have any questions of our captain? No? Okay. Thank you very much. So Captain Allegria, I think you're the only department that doesn't have shorts.
Yeah.
As part of their uniform.
Next year. Can't ask for everything right away.
Okay.
But I do know I'm going downtown after the meeting to check the fire lanes because we all know cops are infamous for that. Fire hydrants and everything. Just kidding. I walked down there, they were clear.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I was asked to run some numbers of calls for us. So in June, we had 69 medical runs and 42 fire runs. And July, we jumped up to 88 medical runs and 29 fire runs.
Wow.
So the guys have been busy. Weekends, weeknights, all, all of the above, they're, they're out. Fire alarms have gone down a little bit. Other than that, our, our door got fixed over there, so all our doors are operational. And we are just plugging away at inspections and doing some brush inspections, follow-ups. That's it.
Do you have any idea in your reporting, how many of those are alcohol-related versus other medical?
No, not yet, no.
Not really? No? I mean, you can kind of guess on some of them.
I'm working with Pat, where the software we're using is going to be outdated, or they're going to stop running it. So we're looking at the different options, and one of those has, it's very easy to, to go in and get data because it's a newer system. So I'll be able to, once we switch to it, I, I could ask it, I'd tell it what I want, and they'll program it for us.
Wow. Okay. Great. Good. Anybody have any questions of our fire chief? No? Okay.
When will you guys be switching to the new program?
We're just, hopefully maybe possibly two months?
Good.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Dan, you're, you're up.
I am.
Oh, and Matt too. Oh, you saved, you're for last.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a couple of quick things to report on. The June TOT and visitor-driven revenues are still coming in, but so far, it looks like June is going to be another really strong month, following up a record-setting month in May. Cross-channel warfage is going to be up compared to pre-COVID June 2019 by about 10%. And I expect TOT is going to be up by more than that. Still kind of processing all the checks coming in. Definitely positive. We're still, you know, cautiously optimistic for the rest of the summer. We're waiting for cruise ships to return to the harbor. And then we're also closely watching the COVID developments, but looking back, everything the last few months has been very positive. My plan is to have a more detailed report at a future meeting where we can do a comparison to what I had estimated in the budget. But in general, I expect the, the revenues to come in higher than what I had budgeted back in April and, and May for the last fiscal year, meaning while I still think we'll probably have to draw some on reserves, the, the drawn reserves is going to be less than what even was reported at that budget meeting. So definitely positive. And we're cautiously optimistic for the rest of summer. The other thing I just wanted to report out is finance is working with the planning department on a new short-term rental permitting, licensing, monitoring, kind of all-in-one software. It's in our, it was in the budget that was adopted last month. Some of the cool things for that from a finance perspective is it's going to allow us to better identify and be proactive in identifying illegal rentals on the, on the market, as well as it'll give us the ability to potentially identify underreporting. So that's something we really haven't had the capability to do. If someone's paying and paying every month without doing a formal audit, it's really hard to know whether or not they're reporting accurately. But there's some features in this program that will at least give us an indication of where we should be looking for any underreporting. Hopefully that's not occurring, but it's just one more tool at the city's disposal. So we will be providing updates as we have more to report out, but Mike and I are kind of in the early stages of finance and planning. It's really a whole team effort to put that together.
Yeah, that's great. Does anybody have any questions of our finance director? No, but thank you for the good news.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So with some of those shorter department reports, I, I think I'm going to do my 17 items that I've got listed, my little longer version of it, and use some of their time. A couple of things we've got coming up in the Recreation Department. Beach Bingo continues to go from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays. This Saturday, and we did it two summers ago, we had some success. We started a little later in August, but we, we tried a Friday. During August, we start to get, during the week, the crowds, kids are going back to school. So we're going to try it again, starting this Saturday from 5 to 6 on South Beach. Beach Bingo, starting this Saturday as well. Movies on the Beach, we have our last showing. It's Frozen 2. And we are going to debut our lightly-used, but new to us inflatable screen. A lot of duct tape this year, a lot of bubble gum to keep our screen together. It's a screen that's been used probably for 10 years plus, and it just is literally on its last leg. We tried, we retired it after the first movie, but couldn't get a screen fast enough, so we had to add more duct tape, more bubble gum to it. Got through the, the second two. But we're going to debut it Wednesday, this Wednesday coming up. It is again Frozen 2. And we're going to try a couple of things this time. We're going to have a dress-up contest for the kids with prizes. We're going to have trivia with prizes, and then we're going to do a sing-along. So all probably between 7 and 8, with the movie starting about 8 o'clock. I received the question today, and I probably get it once every other day, about fireworks on Labor Day. Just wanted to reiterate, we're not planning on a fireworks show. We'll put that on the website as well, but for Labor Day. And again, just focusing on July 4th for next year. Labor Day coming up, we're planning on a couple of things. We're planning on, is everybody enjoying the Olympics so far?
Yeah.
We've liked the format of a couple of the games, and we're going to try a three-on-three basketball tournament on Sunday. Both the kids, kind of a middle school, high school, younger high school, and then 16 and over. So there'll be three divisions, and that'll be on the Sunday before Labor Day. If we get, we're going to have banging music out there. It's going to be a lot. And then if we get good registration for that, I think we're going to try a sand soccer on the volleyball court, just a small, short court. Just whoever's in town, we'll take sign-ups probably that Friday and a little bit before the day on Saturday. So something to look forward to. Last couple of things. We are starting to register next week for our youth soccer program. It starts in mid-September, so registration will be out for that, as well as, believe it or not, we've got Fall Festival coming up, and we'll start registration for that, which is a later in October event. Primetimers, we've got a couple of things coming up. We've got Bunco and Potluck on August 26th at Tremont Hall. Tremont Hall, we have, with the new guidelines for being indoors with masks, we're only renting outdoors, so we're going to do the same. We'll have shade canopies out there. We're going to do the whole thing out there. And then we've got our Two Harbors Cyclone Trip on September 10th. So with that, if there's any questions.
Is that inflatable screen like the one that the island company has out there?
It is, yeah. I've had some background in using that. We had one in Calabasas, which was great. Easy to pop up, you know, where it's taken three or four, about three people to pop this one up. One or two people can do it.
So you could put it on the water too, it'll float, right?
We could possibly do that. We're going to see if we can get it on the sand without it blowing away. We're going to tie it down, stake it down, everything we need to do. But yeah, we're looking forward to.
Yeah, I saw that. They're really cool looking.
Yep.
Awesome. Well, you've got a lot going on. And day camp's still rocking and rolling?
Day camp, we're continuing to see about 30 kids every day, so you'll do register in advance. We'll start to see it taper off, which is nice because we've got staff going back to school as of the end of next week.
Oh, right. Right. Okay.
Yep.
That's great. And Matt came up with something else. Here he comes.
It's going to take a little setup, but I think I will be able to get the video to play for the Medal of Honor ceremony. So I might be out here while the council member reports are going on.
Okay.
But hopefully I'll have it set up in just a minute.
Matt, thank you. I thought that's what you wanted. Does the Assistant City Manager have anything to report?
Not this time. Thank you, though.
Okay. City Manager?
I just have two quick things. So about a couple of weeks ago, the city was contacted by Carnival Corporation. And so last week, Michael and I sat down and had a call with three of their representatives, and it's about having a protocol agreement for coming into our harbor. And they've been working with the State Health Department, LA County Health, and Long Beach Health Department. That protocol agreement will come before the city council for your approval also, for hopefully the cruise ships coming back.
Excellent.
And then also, I just wanted to let all the council members know, because I know you've been fielding a lot of complaints on noise in our community. And so on August 17th, it is slated to talk about noise within the city limits, and anything that has to do with amplified music or outdoor speakers, et cetera. And it will be all zones, whether it's coming from the harbor, commercial areas, or residential areas.
Great. Thank you. Well, and City Attorney, did you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. That's cute. Okay. Well, I have nothing to report, so when it comes to me. Does anybody else have nothing to report?
Just a question for next time, if we can just get an update. I know the moratorium on evictions was extended, but was, it sounds like limited to certain regions or spaces through October. That just came out right before we got here today, so I don't know if we can just get an update on that, along with whatever other COVID updates through our next council meeting. But otherwise, nothing to report.
Just want to check for those on the Zoom. Are you able to see the video?
All I can see is the email screen.
Maybe we can do this at the end of the meeting, just in the interest of time, and I'll try to figure it out.
Okay.
Sorry, Matt. No, I put you on the spot.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, other council member report? Michael?
Paramedics and the Fire Department.
Nope.
We rely on each other heavily for safety.
Now, just have a couple of contracts this week, next week, but that'll, that's it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing new to report, just appreciated being there to represent the city for the Medal of Valor. And was happy to see such a nice turnout. And that's all I have. And that's all I have.
Okay. Oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You would be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. And Michael, do you have anybody on your machine?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Consent calendar.
We have nine items this evening on the consent calendar, one of which is the city council acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. First one is minutes from the July 20 regular city council meeting and the July 22 special city council meeting. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $1,501,378.74, and that's for the time period of July 12th through July 23rd, 2021. The third one is to adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2021 fourth quarter treasurer's report. The fourth one is to appoint Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer as the voting delegate and to adopt a resolution designating him as the voting delegate for the annual League of California Cities Conference in September of 2021. Unfortunately, no city council members didn't work with any of their schedules to be able to attend that league this year, and we had verified with the league that one of our staff members could be the voting delegate.
Thank you, Michael.
The fifth one is to adopt an ordinance of the city of Avalon amending Title V, Chapter 5 of Article 11, and Title V, Chapter 5 of Article 14 of the Avalon Municipal Code, excuse me, banning commercial operation of personal assistive mobility devices, electronically motorized boards, motorized scooters, and segways in Avalon. And just as a reminder, that this was introduced and all further readings waived at the last council meeting. The sixth one, same thing, it was introduced and further readings waived at the last meeting. And this one is tonight, is to adopt the ordinance of the city council of the city of Avalon, adding Chapter 4 to Title 4 of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. The seventh one is to approve a contractual Olanunu for a not-to-exceed amount of $96,320 to assist the city of Avalon with compliance for the year 7, 8, 9 requirements of the small municipal separate storm system, sewer system, MS4 permit, and to make the finding that the city of Avalon has satisfied the sole source requirements as specified in the Avalon Municipal Code. And that's with Daniel App with his company, and he's been working with us for the last six years.
Okay.
The eighth one is, whoops, to find that since no bids were received by the specified deadline, the city council can dispense with any further public bidding for the procurement and find that the city would not gain a competitive advantage for further bidding and can contract for the work more economically or efficiently by negotiations pursuant to Avalon Municipal Code, Section 3-4.106B and 3-4.111, Sections B and C, and direct the city manager or her designee to negotiate and contract, execute a contract with de novo planning group not to exceed $150,600. And I should have stated also that that was for, to award the procurement contract for the city of Avalon housing element update. And the last one is the city council acting as the hospital board, and that's just to receive and file the reports for the CEO July 2021 report and the CFO's June 2021 report.
Is there any items that the council would like to discuss or ask questions about? Okay. Is there, who would? Okay, is there, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through nine on the consent calendar.
I'll second. Oh, either.
You send your one. Okay, call for the vote. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
And Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Annie, can I have just one moment?
Please.
As Chair of the Avalon Municipal, I would just like to commend CIMC in winning or being awarded both the Rotarian Citizens of the Year Award, and the Chamber of Commerce Business of the Year Award, in their hard work in keeping our community safe and protected during the COVID pandemic. Kudos to them for all the work that they have done. I just wanted to call them out for that.
Excellent, Michael, thank you. Yeah. Okay, item number 10.
This is our one and only item this evening on general business, is the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Chapter 21 of Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the operation of sidewalk vendors. And just as a short recap, during the July 20, July 22 special meeting, the City Council unanimously have adopted an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 21 of Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code imposing regulations on sidewalk vending in compliance with Senate Bill 946. And there was just a couple of things in that, and that was adding the operation hours of being 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and then we added a section allowing any prospective vendors the ability to appeal conditions attached to their vending permit, or denial if they're vending application to the City Council.
Is there any questions before there's a motion? Okay, who would like, I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Chapter 21 of Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the operation of sidewalk vendors.
Second.
Lisa's second. No comment, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Before I adjourn the meeting, I just wanna make a couple of things that came to mind. Is anybody attending the Contract Cities Conference?
Councilmember De La Rosa is.
Oh, excellent. Okay, and is it possible to get an update maybe at some point about what's happening with Dion and Sons on the Casino Dock?
Certainly.
Okay, thanks.
Is there something specifically you just wanna know how well they're doing? I know that they have tripled the amount of fuel that they're selling versus what the city was selling, so.
Awesome. But in terms of the construction of the new building?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Just what's happening, okay. Okay, well, here we go.
Wait, 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 I have a quick question. This is for the, for the City Attorney. I heard a few comments that the, because the governor's emergency order is supposed to be ending in September, that that is going to require us to go back fully to in-person meetings. Do you have any update on whether, or have you heard anything about whether that order will be extended or not?
I have not heard if that order will be extended. There is some legislation that is making its way that will allow us to continue to do Zoom meetings without posting at each location, so that is expected to pass and go into effect immediately, but we have not heard anything about the extension of the emergency order. And if in fact that legislation is passed, that would in effect extend the rules for, to allow us to continue to Zoom. There is gonna be the ability to continue to meet remotely, the big issue is now going to be whether you have to post it at each location, or whether just having one area in, at City Hall where people can come is sufficient. And so we'll, we are monitoring that, but it's, we're expecting that to pass in two to three weeks. So we'll have clarity by the end of August.
Okay, thank you very much.
I know there are people that would love to see the rest, all of us up here, so let's hope we can get to that as soon as possible. Scott, you can still stay home, but.
This is not my home, this is my office, which is my second home, I guess.
Okay. Well, anyway, if there's no further business, oh no, yes, there is. Thank you. Matt, you think you got it?
We'll see.
All right.
One second.
Council, can you see now?
Yes, yes.
The City of Avalon on the island of Catalina Island is, is a remote location, yet it's close to the mainland. So for people that get island fever, it's still close enough that they can get over there and get their shopping, and their fix of their different restaurants, but the solitude out here is what people like. In a couple of seconds, they can be on the beach with thousands of people, and then half hour later, they can be up in the hills all by themselves. It's a pretty great place to be. The Harbor Department has a very strong relation with both the lifeguard, paramedics, and the Fire Department. We rely on each other heavily for safety. We are the first responders to any waterborne incidences in the harbor, and just outside the harbor.
The Baywatch crews here have a really, a very close working relationship with the Avalon Harbor Department. It's a pretty symbiotic relationship, where most of our responsibilities on the boat is on the, is outside of the harbor, as far as marine rescue goes. When it comes to medical calls, we both work together inside the harbor. I've known many of the harbormen for 25 years. William I've known really well since the days he was a shoreboat operator in the harbor. It's about as close of a working relationship as we have, anywhere that I can see. We were just finishing another call, and we're in the squad, and the Harbor Department called us, and I could tell by the intensity of their voices, there's something that's going awry, and they said they needed Baywatch down in the harbor immediately.
Baywatch, Harbor Dispatch, we need Baywatch out to the harbor immediately. We have a patrolman having a medical emergency.
What's location?
At the flyer, 250, morning 250.
We got a person stuck underneath a patrol boat. Patrol boat's capsize.
Looking out the window, our patrol boat basically go into an odd maneuver in reverse, and basically, at that point, you just realize that there's a situation aboard this boat that's not normal, not anything you see, and totally out of character for the patrolman that was aboard the boat. It appeared that the patrolman slumped over near the tow post, but on the side of the boat, and, and I just couldn't be sure, because everything was turning around, and then eventually I couldn't see the patrolman anymore.
When I passed out, I hit the controls with my hands going down, went full reverse, and then the boat cocks up on its back end, and just digs its way in, and then flips over.
I was running my rows, talking to the boaters, and I heard my partner call out on the radio, Kurt, are you okay? And there was no response, and then I heard a more urgent tone in my partner's voice, and I responded with, where is he? So he told me he was out in front of the harbor, so I started making that way, and as soon as I had a line of sight, I could see his boat going in reverse, full throttle, with him slumping behind the wheel.
It was like a fly, we'll say, and you just got swatted, you had no control over it, you're just glimpses of reality when you come in and out of your consciousness. I mean, it's just, you went out, and you're fighting to get back, you're just hardwired programmed to survive.
As I got closer, I saw the boat actually roll over. So as soon as I saw where he was, and the boat rolling over, I started dropping my duty belt, taking off my glasses, taking stuff out of my pockets, dropping my radio, pulled up alongside the boat, still doing about three, maybe four knots, and I jumped in the water, kept one hand on the side of the boat, so I had a location, reached underneath, and found him, grabbed him and pulled him out. At that point, I saw that he was awake, but not alert.
When William jumps off his boat, jumps right down in front of me, just like this, and you say, okay, here we are, let's get out of here, or something like that.
You see the video of William jumping in the water to go into this life-and-death situation, and it looks like he's just hopping in a pool in Palm Springs to go for a swim or something like that. I don't even know if I would have looked that cool going into that situation. I think that really goes to the professionalism of Avalon Harbor, and to William as a waterman and as a harbor patrolman, that it's just, it's so impressive. And William literally pulled his boat up, put his boat into neutral, jumped off the boat, and went underneath the boat where Kurt was trapped, and pulled him out, and brought him over to the dock. It was incredible. With all his uniform on, he had no time to change or do anything, he just went in the water and got him, you know, underneath his boat that was moving around still, the engines were on, you know, just quite an amazing rescue.
But at that point, we had a Good Samaritan and inflatable, they get the victim into the inflatable. We knew Baywatch and Fire were responding, and this is that, that tight-knit group that I talk about. So when we had that partnership with them, and those guys responded down, and as the inflatable got underway with the patient, basically directed him over to float five, where, where we had the medics waiting. Baywatch was there, Fire was there, and it was an easy transfer.
This particular situation, I think, highlights something really important about our work on Catalina, is the ability for all of us on this island to work together for a common cause, and we have an extremely close relationship with Harbor, we have an extremely close relationship with Avalon Fire Department, with the Sheriff's Department, with our own Station 55, we work very closely together. I think it's a model for what can be done with limited resources when you're far away from the mainland on what to do. And the fact that William was able to make this rescue, and we were all ready to assist, and just do what we had to do to rescue one of our own coworkers, I think, is just really highlights a very unique and special way that we operate on Catalina. And I was really proud to be a part of it. William's a longtime friend, Kurt's a longtime friend. It's very meaningful to me that William is getting this award on behalf of the Avalon Harbor Department. Avalon Harbor Patrol is like family, so it makes perfect sense for one of them to get the Lifeguard Medal of Valor, and William truly deserves it. He's a stand-up guy. I mean, you see that video of him on scene, that's, he's beyond a lifeguard level when it comes to, you know, being in the water. So I think we're all really proud of him.
But it's, it's a real honor and a privilege to be working with him, and he did cut this award pretty short, because he retired shortly after that, a couple of days after that. He's completed a, you know, perfect career. So I wish him well, and all his ventures, and it's, I know my family and daughter very grateful for his participation in my survival.
I wanna thank all my family and friends for coming to this event. Thank you very much for awarding me the Medal of Valor, and for the paramedics that put my name in. I am humbly accepting this award, and I won't be able to accept it in person, because I'll be up in Alaska fishing. My brother and I will be enjoying a week together, and once again, thank you very much.
Okay, well, now, meeting's adjourned. How'd you get that really cool sound going there?